I'd like to call to order the council meeting for the city of Nelson, August the 5th, 2024. Take a moment and have a moment of prayer. Father God, we thank you, Lord, tonight. We just ask that you would lead us, guide us, direct us in all the decisions that we make. Unify us, Father God, to do what you called us to do inside this city. We thank you, Father God, for each leader here tonight, and I just ask that you would bless them, Lord. Ask that you would watch over and guide our policemen, our firemen, our servicemen, Father God, and our EMTs, Lord, that are on the road and that are here and some overseas, Father. I thank you for just the opportunity to give back to our community. I ask that you will be with us in this meeting again, with guidance and directives. We ask these things in your name. Amen. James, can I get a allegiance? Are you going to pass the baton?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the real religion, the saints, the one nation, under God, and the universal, with the ever-keeping justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve our agenda for this evening? Chris, you want to go? I get a second.
Say it.
Nathan, do you need all in favor? You know, thank you. Public appearance, okay. I understand Mr. Thomas says this has nothing to do with the agenda, but we're going to give you two minutes. The council has read your, you've come up to the podium. The council has read your email, and it sits with Jeff right now, and I'll explain to you out there, but we'll let you go ahead and have two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I got time to roll, and thank you for recording me, Steve, Mary, and members of the council all being seated in brief. I know that you have a long meeting ahead of you, many decisions to make. Thank you first for reading my letter, and thank you also for allowing me again to be here today, even though I'm not a resident of the city. I wanted to put a face behind the name on the page and just share with you that I was just cautiously optimistic that this mayor and council would see to my written request to voluntarily make the changes that I sought. I understand in reading the article, the chapter, the title, that is applicable to the regulatory fees, that the ordinance that's on file with the city clerk here postdates the state mandated date for legislative action by eight months. So it's not legislatively required at this time. However, also in addition to the fact that it's a moot point anyway, because there are no dealers or ranges within the city limits, so there's no regulatory fees to be imposed at in regards to that type of business operation as it stands now. I just wanted to voluntarily come up here on my own accord and ask you to please consider, if maybe not for the charter, because I know that's expensive, but at least for the ordinance, if y'all will just voluntarily be willing to rescind it, an application of the fact that the city of Nelson is very problematic.
Thank you, sir. And as I told you, it is, the letter is with our city attorney, Mr. Breathrage.
I respect the legal opinion that's been presented to you by Dyer and Russbridge, and I'll certainly see to every decision council makes in the matter pending, of course, any future legislative occurrences from the general.
Thank you, Thomas. Any questions from you guys? All right. Okay, we will, anybody else for public appearance this evening? Want to say no? Okay. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Next up is our, yes, ma'am. Next up is the approval of minutes. Can I get, can I get a motion to approve our July 1st council meeting minutes?
I get a motion to approve in July 1st.
Second? All in favor? You know, can I get a motion to approve our July 22, 2024 special call meeting in public hearing for the military?
Make a motion to approve a July 22 special call meeting.
Okay. Get a second. We intend, all in favor? Yes. And can I get a motion to approve the July 25, 2024 special call meeting for T. Sploster Pickens County?
I'll make a motion for those.
Okay. And we intend the first and 22nd, and all in favor? Yes. Thank you. Next up is our police report. We have Lieutenant Brooke Anderson with us. Miss Anderson, would you like to?
Yes, I'm just getting saddled. Lieutenant Brooke Anderson, I'm the precinct commander now, the ball ground precinct. Don't have anything to bring to you yet. Still getting saddled, so.
Yeah, and I know you, you're just like, you're brand new. So she's, she just, Lieutenant, this is brought her by, I think it was last week or the end of the one before.
The one before the session meeting.
Yeah, so brought her by and introduced us to everybody. So she has great temperament, and we're going to love her. Thank you for being with us.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the mayor's report. We have settled on September the 14th for our next movie night. I'll also do the mayor's reading with the kids before that. So you guys got babies, bring them out, just to support literacy. We've got books for all the kids, and we have a little back in school bag with some crayons and stuff in it, courtesy of the Georgia Marlboro Company. We did have some trees down. I don't know if you guys are aware, we had some trees down. We had a big one over in Laurel Lake, and I got a phone call about 6:30 one evening. It was, had fallen, and it was one of the top. It like snapped about 20 feet up, and it was just hanging and hanging in the road. I was able to call Kurt Radfield with the city of Jasper. He came right out. He was here in 15 minutes, and then he brought a crew out that could handle some of that day for us. So got it down, and Kurt and I dragged, we dragged limbs and was able to make things happen. And then the next day, our maintenance crew actually finished up and got it taken care of. I did have a meeting this morning with our, with our maintenance crew, because we are expected to get some weather from Hurricane Debbie. That's, I guess that tail is going to come around, so just everybody be mindful, we are prepared. And any questions for me? Kelsey and I have a class on, is it firm shape? It's, okay, government contracts. And then I think the fall, that's September, is the safety.
Yeah, September, 14th, which is the mayor's.
Yeah, and I have the mayor's leadership council that I'll be doing the 28th through the 30th. Okay, we are, we are finished with all of our council, our city hall repairs, with the exception of just one cause of the event, and we will be, we'll be finished, so. I think that's all for me, so if anybody gets anything from me, we'll move on to Miranda for our finance report.
Okay, we'll go over the bank balances. General fund, $964,194. Slosk four, $127,769. Slosk five, $1,060,460. Cash reserve fund, $168,581. And Slos 2020, $1,017,361. And the PERS grant is $118,453. So our revenues are sitting at 97%. They should be 91% or less. And expenditures are at 98.17%, and that should be 98% or more. You will see that the budget amendments for fiscal year 2024 are within this packet. So you guys can look at that. Still finishing up all the term entries for 2024, and gonna start to audit, is it like this week?
I think so. I think all of them say.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So other than that, it's all right.
Okay.
Oh, and I think tax taxes is supposed to be out this week.
Or maybe the next week.
I don't know, but we will need to call a meeting as soon as we figure that out, so we can get that.
Awesome. Okay. All righty. Any questions for Miranda on the finance? Very good. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. The HI zoning ordinance amendment, this is the second reading. Okay.
Do you get the version I sent you?
Yes, this was, it was, I said that it will be Friday, maybe Sunday. You can put that in the number, but right now.
It's under eight.
I'm just going to make sure that. It doesn't have blue on it or something?
Never.
Like deleted landfills, that was the one change that we missed.
Any questions? Do we need, we don't need to read this, do we?
No.
Okay. This is cheating, and I'm going to have to break it up in seconds.
I'm going to have to each read it. Yeah. I think that's the real.
Do it, do it at the end. We'll say.
You're going to stay here.
So this is the second reading. Can we vote tonight as well?
Please.
Okay, please. Can I get a motion to approve our HI, well, better ask if there's any questions. Do we need to ask if there's any questions from the audience?
Yeah, we had our public hearing.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve our HI zoning ordinance amendment?
Motion.
There you go.
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor? I just want to make sure I was doing it right. All right, next up is sanitation property. I had an awesome meeting with, yeah, and we have, we have some stuff out here. I had an awesome meeting with the broker for David Ratcliffe with Rat Holdings, and an amazing, an amazing gentleman, and he would love to help the city of Nelson. I also had, I also invited Cherokee County down so they could have the same dialogue with him about the property needed for their new fire station. At the same time, we looked at the different properties. There's two four acre tracts that would be suitable here, and he's supposed to give me some pricing. He said it'll be special pricing for Nelson, because they really want to work with us. And to show good favor, and the fact that he really wants to work and loves what the city is doing here and this council is doing here, he wrote us a $1,000 donation check from his personal account for our events. So he says he's been watching Nelson for a while and just was really impressed with what we're doing, so something he could definitely get on board with. He did say that possibility of development in the future, so. So we, as we get updates on this sanitation property and we narrow down the location, I've got to get with, I've got to find out about, we would have to survey it, there's some steps to it, and once I find out the steps, we'll probably vote on that in September, and then we'll get those steps started and pick our piece of property. We'll probably need three to four acres, and the reason being is we're going to have to have fill lines for our maintenance farm, for our bathroom, and for, you know, washing our truck and stuff like that. So, but it is coming to fruition, so I'm excited about that. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Cherokee County Max, how much is it going to help on the fire station?
Um, they're, I think they're, it's just a joint project with us, but we're, they'll be building it, so, yeah. I haven't gotten all the details. I know that they were here, they also looked at the land from a, from a, they're getting, they're going to do a topography survey and some other surveys on the land to see which one better suits their needs, because it's much bigger than ours. And then we'll, because there's two four acre tracts that are right there, side by side. And they're, I want to say they're like, the one that we would be, for the maintenance farm, would be behind the fire station. So, and they're going to need that as well, because of the, they have to have sewer, storm drain. I know one of the options was maybe to get with ball ground to see if they would bring sewer up, since it's so close to Jordan Road, so it's, that may be an option.
I know on the one of our flocks, that Cherokee County years ago, we bought, sit in ball ground and then use our tree farm. And they did that.
Yeah, we picked one up, but it is good. We did have a conversation about the IGA. I had another meeting this week to review the new IGA that removes the pickingside, since the pickingside will be handled by pickingside. So I have a meeting with them, and then we'll have an IGA, and we'll probably, we will go ahead, let's go ahead and set a work session. And we'll, we will vote to approve that IGA, so we can get it done as quick as possible.
We'll just take that off the bill tomorrow.
Okay, let's do that then. Since we got to vote for that too, we can do that. Send the work session to the military at some time. But I'll keep you guys up to date on all of that. If you, the property's back here, I have approval. Anybody that wants to go back and take a look at this property, please feel free to do it. There are several parcels here, like I said. These two here are the two, on this orange page, the two in the yellow, there's two right here, these are the two that we're looking at, so. And as I get more information, like I said, I'll update the guy to make sure we're all on the same page. Any questions about sanitation property? Okay. All right. Infrastructure project, Matt, just engineering with Barry, and he did not make it.
Yeah, well, he still compiled numbers, but he had sent the updated survey to the detention farm, so we'll see what those problems being made. So he should have some proof soon. They just got this back. He's got a good information.
He's hoping to have, I know the last time I spoke with him, well, he's held to that always the 15th date, so hopefully we will have that. I did have an opportunity to speak with Jeff Morton about batch, you know, and they're just waiting on the, they're just waiting on the bid back, so to throw all the support at it that we need. Any questions about the infrastructure project? When Barry gets this done, he's going to come out and actually talk everybody through Any questions for you, Mr. Taylor? Councilman McQueen, any questions? Mr. Alver? Mr. Alver, if you have any questions, I'll see what you have. All right, we're going to head to our fiscal '24 budget amendments, and I'll turn that over to Miranda.
All right, so Phil Nettis, we increased the, we have revenues for exceeding our expenditures, so we increased our budget about $54,296. That was to offset some of the extra stuff. And I just balance out each department, as you can see. One of the big hitters this year was the fire tax. Yeah.
I'm going to use the one that's been included, and then we can discuss it in turn after the records.
Okay.
Just don't vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
Otherwise, what to do again?
There's a couple more things that needed to be, that needs to be looked at, so Miranda will go ahead and do that, and we'll put it back on for you. You want to put it on the work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm going to, I'm telling you that it was the fire tax, it was the fire tax.
Okay. So, amendments.
But that would be the one, it doesn't.
Okay, we'll add that one. Back to it, okay. Any questions other than, other than that? I mean, you guys, we'll give you an opportunity to review it. I just know, we'll move on to E, which is the park expansion proposal for CDs. Well, can we use 23 Spring Street where the, that is already up? Let me go back to that. I'll give Michael Kidd a call. So E, this is the proposal for the drawings, CDs that we're going to need. I did go back and look at the chance, because when I looked back at the work, came out of our surveys, there just wasn't, I can't see, taking tennis, putting tennis courts in and basketball out, when you had people that I would provide, I think.
I'm just trying to think of what can get used the most. I don't know many 50, 60, 70 year old people that play basketball, but apparently everybody plays pickleball. Like a little six year old to play in pickleball. So I was just thinking of what would be multi-use for more people.
Yeah.
Because that's a, a full basketball court is a lot of space.
It is. We had, I don't remember how many kids we had in here, in addition to the letters we have. I still have all of them, and the surveys that we did that they went on. I don't know if it's just that it's always been here, or what it is, but that's, that is the thing. And if we're doing, yeah, if we're doing pickleball, though, I mean, we have, what, we have two pickleballs? Okay. So we have two pickleballs, and then, and then we would have a basketball, and then we would have a, yeah, you have two pickleballs and a basketball right there, in that area. And at some point, I hope that we can revamp the park down there and add cattle and some slides on it for our bigger pitches, but. Any questions about the CDs, construction drawings? For the park expansion? And we, so Kelsey and I were talking, he brought up the storm drain buffer variance, if required. He's checking in on that now for us. We, we have 23 Spring Street with that header in it, and it's open, so water can go into that, if we have the music for that. So, but I'll get some additional information from him on that. And I think he's, he told me he was going to try to come to our September meeting, so. We look at prices down here at the bottom.
Is that just for the additional, what, three lots involved?
Um, this, the construction drawings are for phase one, and it'll include, he lumped in the other lots that we taught, the basketball, the pavilion, the community garden, so it's all for all of that.
So what we've got in the past with the construction drawings?
That was a rendering. He came in and did all the, the auto labor, he came in and met with us, did the, did the town hall, the survey, stuff like that, and then the construction drawings are your next, that's your next step forward. Once you get construction drawings here.
That's what you did with?
That's what you did with, yeah, and he'll help us with it and stuff together, so. All right, does anybody have any, $36,000 is kind of low, but he always treats us very well, so. Yeah, it's what I said.
Do we have anything to grab what we're doing before we get to the construction drawings?
Um, the only thing that it would not take into consideration is the variance buffer, and that's if it's needed. So, I mean, we already have our, we already have our rendering, it's the one that he brought out, everybody agreed to on council. So this, like I said, this is just the next, this is just the next phase.
Yep.
Yeah. It's on a round table. Are you good with the $36,000?
Yeah.
For construction drawings, get it underway?
Good.
John Alver? Chris McQuaid? Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the $36,000 for the construction drawings for our, for our park expansion? And the $4,000 variance buffer, if required?
I'll make a motion.
You have a timer?
I'm second.
Okay, we got a second. From us to John Alver. All in favor? Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, next up is new business. That was hard, but. Fire station lease for Cherokee County, and our new business is up. We, we need to extend our, our lease for dollars for the Cherokee, for Cherokee, our fire station lease for Cherokee County. I guess, how, what's the year this one? I don't remember.
It's about five years. I copy the original leases and it was for April 2018. So it's definitely just the original, so we need to get it.
And of course, I don't think, I think they're pushing pretty hard to get this, you know, to get this, the new station underway, so. Don't think it'll take that long, but.
How old's this one? I disagree.
Usually five years.
They're five years.
Yeah. We think maybe in that period of life.
Six months.
Five years, the expiration date obviously refers 2020, as long as it's not terminated.
Which is a benefit to our Cherokee County.
I have a great deal, so many of the signs were last.
It's the sun, perfectly.
Yeah.
That's why you could have sent me.
I get one of, yeah.
It never ever changes.
Yeah. They take their electric bill and stuff like that out of it, and provide fire service services.
That's the way it was in the water system, so Cherokee.
But you know, I kind of like having a new fire department down there, because it'll be manned 24 seven, and it'll be right in Pickle Street, so that's kind of a win-win.
Because that's a volunteer station.
It is.
They have trucks there.
This is ball ground volunteer, but it's still Cherokee County, no?
It's Cherokee County.
That's Cherokee County.
I'm kind of getting away from that ball ground stuff, because it really confuses people.
Is that a question, sir?
Yeah, so. Can I get a motion to approve the fire lease for Cherokee County? About your agreement?
I might vote for it.
Mayor McQueen? Do you have a second?
Second.
May, may to meet you to it, so may to hand you, good job. Okay, next up is office furniture in City Hall. Has everybody had an opportunity to see our lovely new title with the?
I'll vote in.
Okay.
You got close.
We vote?
No.
Yeah. James, please? James Queen?
You're second.
Oh. Yeah, I missed that one. I was so excited. Cause the next step is my favorite. Has anybody had an opportunity to see our, our new table in the back?
It is gorgeous.
Oh my God.
It's so pretty.
Yeah, it's a, a long table with the, um, mar, um, Evan did us a marble in light for it, so. And we got a beautiful deal, like, we could not have bought a yucky conference table. We paid fifteen hundred dollars for it, so. So I was really happy. And again, another, it was another citizen who just believed in what we're doing and they're so happy that they can help our city, so. We, um, we asked him to give us a price, we have, did you get pricing on some of the other stuff? We asked him to give us a price for two desks and, um, and two cabinets for, one for Kelsey's office, one for mine, Pam has taken over my office.
I pulled prices very careful because like when we finished, we, we do a lot of common shipments, so I went in there and there, but wall unit from them on sale is twenty-one thousand dollars. And I pulled one of the target ones, it was six thou, or five thousand, plus shipping, that's just the wall unit. So all of them, everything is pulling up, it was a good, higher than what you're charging and they're usually not giving for, will be able to be, uh, for a particle board, wood of veneer.
So my desk, the desk for me is just, is eleven hundred dollars, I can't buy one from Staples for that. Not unless I just bought a cheap particle board. This one will last, whoever comes in behind me will have, this is, you won't have to buy furniture again. And when you, when we move into our new city hall, these can move right with it because they're solid, they're solid. Cause, um.
Daryl Russell.
Daryl Russell.
My family does have some furniture, it's in that one here, but we'll not actually be prices, like, but it fairly would come along with it.
So, and then there'll, there's two wall units, um, Kelsey's L shaped desk is fifteen hundred dollars, that one in there, how it was the one you have now, just all apart.
I don't think it would be able to be assembled, you know, or to put different plates in to a pack, but, you know.
It was, it was a cheap made particle board when sewed. Yeah, when they took it apart for the, when they took it apart to cut the floor again, it disintegrated and we had to put wood pieces and plates in it to just hold it, but she wouldn't want to sit on it.
I think he should.
Or really lean on it, saying. So, two offices full of furniture, seven, seven thousand, four ninety. Um, I wanted to bring it before the council and have you guys, um, vote on that.
So we can use loss management, so it's not paying that much. The care's money, we use the care's money for the computers, we leased it, um, and we use it remaining for the construction project, it has to be allocated by December.
We are allocating that, so, or is that? So can we, can we, we can't use care's that?
I don't, I think so. That is right, yeah, we did have to, cause it forces putting in as long as, we want to recognize the revenue, so.
Oh, we need to put a.
So we can, we did, so we can.
That might, that might as well have used that to just get it where it's.
To get moving. So. Yeah, this is a lot cheaper and, and it's, and while he's building solid wood, like I said, it's at a reduced rate because it's for the city and he just, just his way of getting back, so. Doesn't want anything in the charge, just wants to, just would like to leave something in, in the city when he goes that says, hey, I was part of that, so. It was seven thousand for internet, you know, the thing about it is, is. Yeah, we don't have any shipping with it.
If you order them on there, it's a hundred dollar. And he did a really good job, he's like, and he, he tries a little bit really impressive.
She doing painting too, or?
It stains everything, everything comes, a hundred percent complete and installed.
The tops will be walnut and the bottom is stained redwood, it's not like, um, particle wood or anything.
Something poplar.
It's poplar, when you say. Any other?
Is that the market now, we'll see?
Which one?
Market down out here.
No, no, that's, that's what we've been doing, we've been finishing up the stuff in the city hall, we had to put all the lights to keep, the lights that were on our new, um, cabinets were staying on all the time because you'd have to get the back down plug and so I had to have you run a, a new, um, run new wire in and wire them to one outlet so we could flip it on to keep from running our lights out, you know, burning them out, it's like the pain, so. Any questions about the furniture before we vote? Can I get a motion to approve the quote from Daryl Russell for seven thousand, four ninety for the two offices?
I make a motion to approve the proposal from Daryl Russell.
Can I get a second?
Second.
That would all three of you, one second. I'll say James Queen for the second and Oliver, unanimous. Um, I don't believe we need an executive session, so can I get a motion to approve? Nathan, can I get a second? Second, Oliver? Unanimous, thank you.